I call the meeting to order and state that notice for this meeting was duly posted. I'm doing it from over here. There is a quorum present, and if you will stand, our Girl Scout troop, 28173 Daisy Patrol, is going to present our colors, lead us in our pledge of allegiance, and sell you some cookies if you haven't got some. All right, girls, come on up. Y'all look shy. Just stand out here. They won't see you behind that. Come right here. Okay. You gonna help us? Huh? You gonna say the pledge of allegiance? All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yay! All right. What a deal, huh? All right. Now we've got a couple of proclamations. This one says, whereas Americans are served every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and the city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our city, state, and nation working effectively, and whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths to protect and serve, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, public works employees, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, health care professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of Missouri City, the United States, and around the world, and whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, building inspectors, food inspectors, parks and recreation professionals, nurses, safety inspectors, computer technicians, and countless other occupations, day in and day out they provide the diverse services our community demands of their government with quality, efficiency, responsiveness, and integrity, and whereas without public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, Mayor, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim that all citizens set seal hereto that on May 6th through 12th, 2018, is Public Service Recognition Week, and therefore I encourage all of our citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, and county, and city. Oh. City manager's here to accept this?
Yes, sir.
All right. You have to make a speech, too?
Well, you want me to do it now, ladies?
Yeah, you can do it now.
Thank you very much, Mayor. On behalf of our Chair for our Employee Recognition Group, Dua Karishi, I think I got it right. We want to thank not only our citizens, but our elected officials who continually support us on a day-to-day basis. Our employees truly touch the lives of people on a day-to-day basis, and this week is a celebration of them. Public service is a very honorable profession, and it's one that I'm very proud that I've had 25-plus years to be a public servant. Every day, my 350-plus employees are out there delivering services and impacting lives, and this week is a time for us to celebrate them, to say thank you. Sometimes, public service is a thankless profession, but I want to take this time to say thank you to all of our employees, our men and women of the public safety and all of our general employees. We want you to know that we truly appreciate all that you do. So, thank you very much for the recognition. Guys, stand up. All of our employees, stand up.
Woo! Yeah. Ready, everybody? One, two, three. One, two.
No, that's what I... I never can get in there. It's just so difficult. Yeah, you have to sit there. Check back to where you're standing.
Yeah, I'll drop my wife.
Oh, that's a good thing. Tell me to kiss someone. I don't like that in hell, either.
Come on up, guys, and ladies. Come on.
Bad team.
Jazz.
Do we have anybody in the street?
Yeah.
We're gonna play some tennis, man. I hear you got pretty good.
But the city hall's safe.
I know, the city hall is safe right now. What about the rest of the city?
All right. This proclamation says that there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 105 sworn members of the Missouri City Police Department. They serve with valor, distinction, and success. Federal statistics show the violent and property crime rates in the United States are at historic lows, thanks in large measure to the dedicated services of the men and women of law enforcement. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made that ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. The names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, which was dedicated in 1991 in Washington, DC. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored, and names of those officers newly engraved on the memorial were formally dedicated during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 30th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th will be. Whereas Missouri City Police Department's annual police officers memorial ceremony will be held this Wednesday, May 16th, at 7:00 PM, and is part of National Police Week. Whereas, May 15th is actually dedicated and designated as Police Officers Memorial Day with federal law P.O. 103-322 directing that all flags be flown at half-staff on that date in honor of the fallen officers and their families. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, Mayor, and on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the City of Missouri City, do hereby call patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 13th through the 19th, 2018, as National Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all citizens may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all of our citizens. I further call upon all the citizens of Missouri City to observe May 16th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our community or have become disabled in the performance of duties, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. And these are them standing behind me.
As Mayor said, May 16th is our memorial. It's at 7:00 PM at the Public Safety Headquarters on the Protectors Plaza. We'll also be honoring all the officers and civilians we've hired over the last year with the swearing-in ceremony. I invite everybody to it. It's a very nice ceremony.
And I will say we're very fortunate that we have not lost a single officer in the line of duty in Missouri City, and I hope we never do. Come on, another hand. One, two, three. One more. One, two.
Hey, man. Thank you.
Adrian.
She handed me angel.
Closet.
All right. Moving on to item four, public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address council on any issue that's not an agenda item. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Remember that we cannot respond either way. So, Bruce, you're up.
I'd like to address the ongoing street repair in Bonne Meade, and I would like to say to the City of Missouri City, we're finally starting to see the Missouri City difference.
Thank you.
As we need is a bridge now to the other side of our recreation center. I would like to mention Golda, who has done a fantastic job of returning my phone calls and considering that people on this council put her in double duty to sit at the animal shelter, I think she deserves a special recognition, like a gift card, Mr. Owen and Mr. Wyatt, that she can maybe go out and have a nice lunch somewhere on you. I would like to commend her for her excellence. Fabulous girl over there. Fabulous girl. I would also like to address, I left a couple messages with council members here who didn't return my phone calls, and I think you know who they are. One of out of the three did, and I congratulate you for getting back with me. I think that's very great. You need to maybe practice what Golda does. So, I think Golda deserves an extra recognition on this. We've had some ongoing problems with the street repair over there, which weren't any greater, but the problem is, I think you need to go further down Reaver Ridge. There's more curbs that need to be done. I think you kind of did stuff that really didn't need to be addressed, but, you know, and left other stuff undone, but there's still curves further down Reaver Ridge that, you know, could be used. And I also like to address another issue. When you call City Hall, if the poor girls in overflow are talking to somebody, you get messages that Missouri City is closed or the operator's not available. You need to get that glitch out of your phone system. If the girls are tied up, they shouldn't be getting that kind of announcement that the City Hall is closed. And I've called this to the attention several times, and it's still continuing to happen. So, I think we should have a great thanks for Golda, and I think people on this council, especially putting her in that position to do double duty, need to get her an extra nice little gift. Thank you.
All right. Brenda.
Hi, my name is Brenda Clark. I reside at 3418 La Costa Road, Missouri City, Texas. I'm a volunteer with the Missouri City Animal Shelter. I'd just like to give you guys a quick, brief, probably not brief enough, update on some great things that have kind of been going on. This past Saturday, a woman by the name of Jackie Shipwash, she runs a nonprofit called Mission Adoptable. She and one of her volunteers, Norma Sossido, drove from Dickinson, Texas, all the way here to Missouri City, Texas, and spent three hours with us, me and several of our really devoted volunteers. Her whole mission is to work with sheltered dogs and training dogs to help give them the option and benefit of dog training so that we can keep them off of euthanasia lists and also to help them be more adoptable at pet adoption events and stay within their homes once they do get adopted. We occasionally get a dog returned because they're unruly. So, that was really cool. The only thing she asks of us is that we pay it forward, and we, as volunteers, all agree to do that and continue to work with the dogs and what she taught us. I also would like to tell you all that in the absence of a shelter manager, Jennifer Gibbons is doing an amazing and awesome job. We are getting dogs to rescues. We are getting, this past Friday, we had, I think, 12 or 14 cats that she probably spent numerous hours, I know numerous hours, coordinating a rescue to take several FIV-positive felines and miniature tini, tiny kittens, and it took her coordination and several other volunteers and Juan and Golda, all of everybody, to help get that done, and it was done, and it was awesome. I would also like to ask you all, please, sometime in the near future, can we get an answer, preferably yes, to getting a full-size washer and dryer at the shelter? It's still not working real well. We can get it donated. We just need the yes to get it. I am also curious, and I know that I'll get the answer from Shawsee, about Stafford and why they are not required to follow our Missouri City standard operating procedures on vaccinations and heartworm testing. I find it irritating, and I find it also not in the best interest of the health of our dogs that... anyways, I'll leave that there. I would like to make sure I say thank you to Golda. She is phenomenal. She is fantastic. I know that doesn't need any additional information. And I would just like to say that there was some incorrect, false postings on Facebook that just kind of always gets my blood boiling. There were no euthanasias over this weekend. Yes, Saturday, we were 100% full, but there was not a dog that was put down. HHS came today and took probably 10 dogs and some cats, and so I thank you very much for allowing them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Item power, staff report, city manager's report.
Mayor and council, I hope you enjoyed your weekend. It's been about several weeks since our last council meeting, so I have a number of updates. In essence of time, I encourage our citizens as well as you, if you didn't get a chance to review our last two city manager updates. First, I would like to remind everyone that it is hurricane season, and we've sent out a number of updates to our citizens, just reminding them that it's around the corner and that hurricane preparedness week is this week. Reminders were shared through our social media outlets, city manager updates, as well as a number of news releases, just giving them information on what they can do to be better prepared for possible hurricane activity. This week, we'll also be celebrating our employees as part of Public Service Recognition Week. The Employee Recognition Committee has planned a number of great events for the whole week, including our annual employee recognition awards luncheon, an ice cream social, and then a barbecue cook-off. I'm still trying to contemplate whether or not I'm gonna come in with my number-one ribs to throw Lance Bothel, but we'll see. To ensure all of our staff could participate and enjoy, all of the non-emergency offices will be closed on Wednesday, only from 11:30 to 1:30 for the luncheon, and then Friday from noon to 5:00. This includes our City Hall front lobby inspections and permitting municipal court and animal shelter. As mentioned during the recognitions, next week is the National Police Week, and we will be hosting the annual Fallen Officers Memorial on Wednesday, May 16th, at 7:00 PM at the Public Safety Headquarters. In addition, there's a number of quick reminders for upcoming events. Our second annual Mother's Day cake decorating event, which was sold out last year, will be on Saturday, May 12th, at 10:00 AM. This Saturday, May 12th, at 10:00 AM at the Community Center. The 2018 Mayor's Youth Commission graduation is scheduled for Thursday, May 17th. We are having our Community Center Plaza ribbon cutting on Friday, May 18th, and that will be followed by our Parks Event, which is our first family fun night in the plaza, which is a monthly summer activity for our Parks Department that they've been doing. Now we have a plaza that we can have that at least to kick off to occur. And then the Fire Station 3 open house is on Saturday, May 19th, beginning at 10:00 AM. It is also the time of year for mosquitoes, and I know you've received a number of recent emails. I've already received several inquiries regarding spraying, and staff has issued a comprehensive FAQ list that's on our website. We've done it through our city manager's report that talks about a number of concerns citizens have expressed as it relates to the type, what we spray with, but more importantly, we get calls on individuals that are concerned about the Zika virus, so we want to make sure that we're prepared. I would like to thank Mayor Owen for joining staff in presenting the proclamation at our Denim Day Event on April 25th, and also attending the Oyster Creek Shrimp Boil on April 21st. Councilmember Preston and Mayor Owen and staff for partnering with several agencies to host this year's Drugs Emposium at the Community Center on April 7th, I'm sorry, April 2nd. The MCPD for partnering with the DEA on the Drug Takeback Day on April 28th. It was very successful, and I want to thank folks who participated. Missouri City Green and staff for partnering on the Papal Shredding Event on May 28th, and Nerika Pakala from Dulles High School for being recognized for the National Honor Society, and Luke Parker with the Boy Scouts of America and other residents who helped, and this is important to note, it speaks to partnership, that group helped our animal shelter with donations, and they also in the process of building some outdoor activities for the dogs to participate in on, so we want to thank them for that. Lastly, special kudos to council and staff for a terrific state of the city. I've heard nothing but high accolades for not only how it was presented, but the food was pretty good as well, so I want to thank everyone. It was all hands on deck, communications, parks, public works, IT, the visitor center, development services, Coeur d'Alene Golf Course, and police, all worked together, because we say together we excel, to make a great event, so job well done. I conclude by recognizing a number of our employees who recently completed a number of programs. Jonathan Sabrussula for completing the National Fire Academy and the Executive Fire Officers Program. Great job, Jonathan. Communication Specialist Adriana Nixon, who was one of my mentors for this program, the National Forums Mentorship Program, and she completed that over a six-month period and did a great job. And then Paul Wispicki and I were recognized for a public service leadership and an interface award, and want to thank the ASPA group for the recognition. As I stated, it was not really about the awards. It's not really about getting a plaque, but it's about the service. So, thank you very much, Mayor, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. And congratulations to you and Paul both.
Thank you.
All right. Item six is consent agendas. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, as printed? Councilmember Emery made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bonney made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item seven, the public hearing. 7A, there are no zoning public hearings, but 7B?
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, adopting a unanimous settlement agreement, setting rates and establishing tariffs for the provision of natural gas service by C Energy LP within the City of Missouri City, declaring a final determination of rates, requiring acceptance by C Energy LP of the rates prescribed herein, providing for repeal, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
And members of council and mayor, this is a public hearing just to consider the adoption of a unanimous consent agreement between the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities and C Energy. The settlement provides for a reduction in the rate that was initially proposed. You all saw that rate back in February of this year. The, you'll see in the cover memo, the settlement provides for a rate of $17 instead of $19.50 for residential customers and a rate of $37 instead of $45 per month for commercial customers.
But the settlement still is an increase.
The settlement is still an increase, but, you know, and just to remind you, this company hasn't requested an increase for about 10 years, but, yes, there is still an increase.
It is a public hearing, so anyone can address council on any, on this issue if they'd like to.
I move that we close the public hearing and adopt the ordinance on first reading.
Councilmember Wyatt made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a motion and second? All those in favor? Motion carries. So, that was all in one motion to close the public hearing and adopt the ordinance once. Okay.
Seven.
Record vote, do we not?
No, not for, not for that item. No, sir.
All right. Item 7B2.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 2 Administration, Chapter 34 Finance and Taxation, and Chapter 82 subdivisions of the Missouri City Code, changing the name of the City Finance Department, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
There's no public hearing on this end.
There is a public hearing because we're amending the subdivision ordinance, which state law requires that whenever we do that, or rules that provide for subdivision, that we have a public hearing.
That's your second?
Yeah, second.
Those in favor?
Didn't say that, did it?
Okay. And again, this is being a public hearing. Anyone can come forward, speak about this item. I didn't see anyone who submitted anything. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
And adopt the ordinance.
And adopt the ordinance?
Yes.
That's your motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a motion and second? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item eight, appointments. There are none. Item nine are authorizations. I will recognize that Senator...
We got a Boy Scout out there.
Oh, yeah, we got a Boy Scout out here?
Yeah, I wonder.
Yes, huh? Where's our Boy Scout? There he is, right there. And Senator Boris Miles, the staff person's here, so thank you all both for coming. All right, item 10 are ordinances.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 58 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Missouri City Code, amending regulations related to the use of a wireless communication device while operating a motor vehicle, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
This is the first of two readings of this ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilor Rulis made the motion. Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tem Ford made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 10B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 18 Businesses of the Missouri City Code, establishing regulations related to massage establishments, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Mayor Pro Tem Ford made the motion. Councilwoman Wyatt, is that who made the second?
Yeah. Who enforces this?
This would be our peace officers, our law enforcement, and also our health folks as well.
Okay. And in addition to, does the state do an enforcement?
Well, the state does regulate massage establishments, correct, but specifically under this, these provisions, it would be the city.
About the Health Department?
Yes.
Health Department also.
Health and law enforcement. Yes, sir.
Good. I'm glad to see us finally do something with this, so we can do something about the ones we have already.
The 21st.
And I understand they've been quite busy. All right, there was a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
That's the first reading, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the first of two readings of that.
Mayor, who is at second?
Councilwoman Wyatt.
And Wyatt.
Item 11 are resolutions. 11A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest an economic development agreement between the City of Missouri City, Texas, and Century Land Holdings of Texas LLC pertaining to certain improvements to an approximately 30.30 acre tract of land located in the City of Missouri City.
Move that down.
Councilwoman Wyatt made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
This is gonna help us get independence built quicker and the development go at the same time.
That is correct, council member. It's just the timing of it. This piece of the section will be built by the developer, and we have a mechanism to reimburse him, so it's a win-win for both the city and the developer.
And the developer did donate the right away.
That's correct.
Very good. Motion by Councilwoman Wyatt, second by Councilwoman Bonney. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. 11B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest the tax abatement agreement by and between the City of Missouri City, Texas, and 827 Wanamaker Limited Partnership pertaining to certain real property to be located on a 16.82 acre tract of land situated north of Willow Oak Drive, south of Buffalo Run, east of Willow Wisp Drive, and west of Fair Pines Drive within Reinvestment Zone Number 18 in the City of Missouri City, Texas.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
And a motion by Councilman Bonney, second by Councilwoman Wyatt. All those in favor?
A minute.
Oh, you, you want to talk?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it's important that we...
Now we got the motion, now we can discuss it, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As you recall, for some time, we've been talking about Warren Alloy. They have two sites presently in our community, and this would be the expansion, third expansion within the Lakeview Business Park. This project, this project is a little over $10 million of capital investment, over 200,000 square feet, and will add jobs...
This is going to help us get independence built quicker and the development go at the same time.
That is correct, council member. It's just the timing of it. This piece of the section will be built by the developer, and we have a mechanism to reimburse him, so it's a win-win for both the city and the developer.
And the developer did donate the right away.
That's correct.
Okay.
Very good. Motion by Councilwoman Wyatt, second by Councilwoman Bonney. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. 11B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest the tax abatement agreement binding between the City of Missouri City, Texas, and 827 Wanamaker Limited Partnership pertaining to certain real property to be located on a 16.82 acre tract of land situated north of Willow Oak Drive, south of Buffalo Run, east of Willow Wisp Drive, and west of Fair Pines Drive within Reinvestment Zone Number 18 in the City of Missouri City, Texas.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
And a motion, Councilman Bonney, second by Councilwoman Wyatt. All those in favor?
A minute.
Oh, you, you want to talk?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it's important that we let.
Now we got the motion, now we can discuss it, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As you recall, for some time, we've been talking about Warren Alloy. They have two sites presently in our community, and this would be the expansion, third expansion within the Lakeview Business Park. This project, this project is a little over $10 million of capital investment, over 200,000 square feet, and will add jobs with an average wage of $60,000 a year before benefits. They have been one of the largest landholders in the Lakeview Business Park, and this project, we were actually competing with other sites. They have moved their headquarters to Houston. They're an international company, so we did have the chance of losing it, but with your assistance, we were able to attract it. The tax abatement is 10 years at 65%, which is less than their existing abatements. It also does not include inventory. It's only on real prop, there's two agreements, items B and C. One is for the real property improvements, and the other is for the personal property, but inventory is not included in that, and they have some significant inventory. In that inventory, they do have, because there's an opportunity for free port exemption, if the inventory they do have is free port qualified, that would be under that, a different section, but it is not part of this abatement. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I thought the, I thought our Rice people were going to take the Warren Alloy piece that was across the street, and then, has that deal not happened?
This actually is a piece between the two that they have.
Yeah, oh, okay.
So this is, this is a different location, and I don't have the map here handy, but they have a spot between their two that would be the last expansion.
Do you know if the Rice company is still working with them on taking over that space?
I, I really not going to discuss, that's not, there's discussions ongoing with a number of companies, but I don't know which company is going to take it at this point.
Okay.
Are they bringing, adding 35 new jobs, or are they just bringing 35 positions?
They're adding.
Adding.
They're not, it's not where they were moving around the plant. They would be new to Missouri City, and it would be an expansion of their operation, so they'd be new positions.
Okay.
Awesome. Very good. Any other discussion? Was a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. 11C.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest the tax abatement agreement binding between the City of Missouri City, Texas, 827 Wanamaker Limited Partnership, and Warren Valve Company LLC pertaining to certain personal property to be located on a 16.82 acre tract of land situated north of Willow Oak Drive, south of Buffalo Run, east of Willow Wisp Drive, and west of Fairview Pines Drive within Reinvestment Zone Number 18 in the City of Missouri City, Texas.
Motion.
Councilwoman Bonney jumped on that. Then is there a second?
Second.
Who's second?
Chris.
Hey! Chris, I was just.
I didn't have to tell him fibs, that was, that was him and Wyatt.
I heard you.
I thought you said.
No, that wasn't me.
It wasn't you? Okay.
He's talking to himself.
I didn't like you. I don't care. All those in favor? That's, I think it's important. We're trying to get you written in there, Chris.
No, but I didn't do it.
Okay. Here's your other chance. Here's D.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest the tax abatement agreement binding between the City of Missouri City, Texas, and AX Park 890 Castcom LP pertaining to certain real property improvements to be located on a 6.13 acre tract of land situated north of Buffalo Run Park, south of Highway 98, east of Cravens Road, and west of the Sam Houston Tollway within Reinvestment Zone Number 16 in the City of Missouri City, Texas.
Is there a motion? Attaboy, Chris. I got him in there. That was Chris. And you had a second, Councilmember Emery? Is there a discussion?
Mayor, council, this is a project we've been working on for, actually over a year. In fact, the Reinvestment Zone for this project was completed in September. The lapse in time was due to the negotiations between the landlord, Trammell Crowe, they're, actually they're owner of the property, and Comcast. This project will locate a Comcast Service Center in the Park 890 Business Park. It'll bring 255 new positions to that. It's much smaller, about 65,000 square feet. The wages are a little bit less, about $50,000 than the last project, but it will locate a significant operation in our community. There are, there should be two agreements, as was with the last item. The personal property agreement did not make it due to timing of notification of, to the other taxing jurisdictions as we're required to do by state statute. So this is the real property improvements agreement. On the 21st, May 21st Agenda, we'll be bringing back the personal property portion of this agreement for your approval. So there are two different agreements, one for the real property, one for the personal property. Tonight, we have the real property. This project and the recommendation for your consideration is consistent with what we've discussed with the council in the past. It's 50% abatement, much smaller, much smaller project, and we would recommend that you prove it.
What do they do?
This is the service center. So they're actually going to have trucks that they'll be having, if you have your Comcast serviced.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get to. Buying the name, you would never know this is Comcast, so that's why, yes.
Well, the reason is, is because the Castcom is a single-purpose entity created by the owner of the property, and they're leasing it to Comcast. So that's a little bit of a play on words on their part. The ultimate beneficiary is Comcast. Comcast is establishing a service center on this location, will have trucks, service personnel, which will be stationed out of this location and be servicing the area of Missouri City and servicing the larger area. So there'll be a significant number of vehicles. There will be inventory that they have on site to go service, and there'll also be a call center and other things in place here.
So are these 255 new positions?
New.
Or once again, are they transferring?
In this case, it's a little bit of both. They are expanding their operations, but they are relocating some of these positions from elsewhere. So it is a combination of both.
Do you know how many positions they're transferring?
Approximately 60% was the number, but I can't hold them to that because it was just, this is what we see, and we believe that ultimately, with attrition and other things, we'll add about 30% brand, 35, 40% brand-new folks.
Okay.
Well, they have a service center over the general public at this place like they have in Sugar Land.
It's a different type of service center. This is not a call, where you go into over by Target in, off Highway 6. This is not where people are going in. This is where people are.
I just wondered if they were going to do that. They need one on this side of town.
Not to my knowledge at this point. Now that, certainly, they have the ability to change that, but at this time, that has not been what has been discussed.
And you might mention that to them, because you got one in Sugar Land and one in Bel Air. That's where the two centers are. Nothing on this side of town for everybody that has Comcast. And if you go to the one in Sugar Land, you will be there a while, I can tell you.
We can mention that to them, Mayor. We can mention that.
It'd be a good idea. I mean, it's kind of like when Best Buy decided that they're going to sell appliances out of the front of their big warehouse. Comcast might consider looking at doing that.
Certainly bring that to their attention.
What are these companies doing to actually offer opportunities for employment to Missouri City residents? Who are they working with specifically?
Well, actually, we have had job fairs for a number of different companies, and that's actually, to highlight the folks at the Communications Department, they've helped arrange getting the word out locally. We've held them in the community center. So one of the things that they have done is they have worked with the city to hold job fairs in the area. They've also publicized opportunities for employment. Outside that, they do, there's no set aside for any specific resident of any community to be hired there, but they've reached out through local media and through local job fairs.
Councilman, I would also add that last year, our HR department hosted a very successful job fair over at our Quail Valley Golf Course with a number of the folks from the business district area. As part of Dr. Williams's business plan for this year, the second one will be held again, and our intent is to make it bigger than what it was previously from last year, so that we can make sure that these jobs, when they come online, that our employee, not our employees, but our citizens have that information and know they can come out and be gainfully employed and at least get their resumes in front of these companies.
So in the case of Comcast, I know at least 10 Comcast people live in the city. Now, I'm sure it's more than that, but I know 10.
Yeah. Councilman, in answer, you asked the question about this entity, and they have, they have not arranged for a job fair, but we have talked to them about that. We have, I want to make it specific, we have worked in the past to arrange those. It's one of the things that we also work with the Texas Workforce Commission. There's a number of things that we bring to their attention. The companies themselves, the ones that select how they want to reach out to them. In the case of Best Buy, which was mentioned by the mayor earlier, they have talked about how, as they get ramped up, they're going to be more active in the community and reach out a number of things. And so I anticipate in that project, which I can't go too far afield on things, but from an economic development standpoint, we put it in front of them. That's another example of how we try to arrange it. Staff from a number of different departments has assisted, whether it's HR or communications, to be a resource to the companies and get the word out to our residents that these opportunities exist.
Mayor, I just want to thank Joe and his robust team that he has in his department for the work that, the work that he's done. You know, we've had a number of great opportunities in working with Park 890 and Trammell Crowe, bringing in some, some great opportunities. But, you know, he's there working with them, and we're excited now with the pending economic development and redevelopment plan. We believe, we believe that that coupled with what's going on over there and the redevelopment of some key corridors is on the horizon, and we're looking forward to, and look forward to him getting us where we need to be.
Very good. There was a motion by Councilman Preston and a second by Councilman Emery. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Council, thank you so much. You'll be seeing the other portion of this next council meeting.
Good. 11A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, finding that CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC's application for approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor to increase distribution rates within the City of Missouri City should be denied, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, and providing notice of this resolution.
Is there a motion?
Move to deny.
As standard. All those in favor? End it. We have our CenterPoint representative sitting on the back row back there. She's being very quiet.
He knew what to expect.
She's being very quiet.
And Mayor, just so you know, we did have an opportunity to meet with CenterPoint and their representatives, E. Joyce and myself, had a real good discussion with them, that, just sharing with us some of the things that they've been able to do over the course of the last year, and some of the services that they were providing. But ultimately, as you know, as we share with them, this is a process that we have to make sure we go through to get the best for our employee, I mean, for our citizens, so.
Well, you know, if they could, if they could keep my electricity from blanking out, and we had to go reset our clocks and everything.
I'm going to address that in a minute.
And we did talk about that, so you know, and it's my understanding, they have added some infrastructure to minimize that. It's not gone away, but, you know, what they stated was, it's a system-wide deal. It's not just, just Missouri City, but there's some issues that go around.
Well, it's not just, yeah, it's not just that. I mean, we had them, you know, on Hampton, on Eldorado, Oyster Cove today, and Dominic and him checked it out, and what it is, is we've got trees that are in the right, in their right-of-way. And I stress that, people don't realize that, I keep trying to tell them that last, that back eight foot of their property is not theirs. And when they plant trees in a utility easement, the utility company has a right to come in and cut them down if they want to. They're being very nice about just trimming them, and then people get upset because they butchered their trees. But they need to understand that, you know, during storms and things like that, the major outage that we have in our city is trees that get into the power lines. That's what's causing these little blips in the system, is that a tree limb touches it. So I know that at least two of the circuits, they've done a survey this week, they're in the process, they started Friday, of putting notices on people's doors that their tree trimming company is in the neighborhood, and they're going to be trimming trees. And I know that they've already started in part of Quail Valley, but I know it's an inconvenience for all of us, but we got to realize that we're fixing to get into hurricane season again. And during Ike, that was the single biggest problem that we had in Missouri City of lost power, is trees that were in power lines. And I know that right now, the trees are growing, and all of a sudden, they're, they're not bare anymore, so they just need to bear with CenterPoint. They're doing what they can, and people need to understand that they got to get in their backyards. You know, these trees are in their backyards, and they've got to get back there to trim them. And I can tell you that they've got a great tree service that tries their best to not mess them up too bad, but they've got to cut these limbs out of these trees. And we had this problem in Lake Olympia. There was a transformer that was bad, and they replaced that, so they're well aware. And I try to tell people, they're the second people that know that they had a problem, because CenterPoint is the first because of your smart meter.
Yep.
You don't have to call them, they know when you have a problem, but, yeah, my email was busting today, and Dominic and I, have Dominic on speed dial.
And if you all receive complaints or things like that, feel free to let us know as well. We can contact the CenterPoint team and let them know.
They do a good job of responding. It's just people just need to bear with us a little bit, and it's a major, major thing for us to do it, so, anyway, thank you. City Council announcements, Chris?
I just would like to thank the Fort Bend Regional Council for choosing Missouri City to host their symposium. It was a great event. And to reiterate what the city manager said, thanks to city staff for a wonderful state of the city. You know, aside from seeing the mayor, yeah, no, make great remarks. City staff works really hard, you know, and people need to know you all worked tirelessly to put on a great event, so thank you.
Jerry? I have nothing. I want to recognize Jimmy Jenkins back in the back from Toll Brothers.
Yeah.
He's building a lot of new homes out there that at some point is going to be part of Missouri City, T.R.E.T.J. now, so wishing him well and.
Yeah, but more important, he's fixing to open up, he's fixing to open up the back of it to 521.
Yeah.
Well, we got about 100 yards left, 50 yards maybe. Where Sienna Parkway will actually go out on the 521, and we won't have to worry about a dirt road back there. Yeah, so it's going to be neat.
That's super.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I do not.
I just want to congratulate Martha Castex-Tatum, our neighbor in District K, who replaced the late Larry Green on her overwhelming victory this past Saturday. And I also want to acknowledge the people who put on the National Day of Prayer here at City Hall. Was very, very fortunate to be a part of that, to pray for our nation as well as for our city. Thank you.
There we go. That's our eighth one that we've had here.